Good evening, everyone. I wanted to welcome everyone to the Board of Trustees meeting and agenda tonight. The date is March 10th, 2022, and the time is 6:07 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we can begin our meeting, per usual, by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to one nation, God. It is for liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll begin our meeting tonight with our public comment portion of the meeting. So if there's anyone who'd like to make a public comment tonight, feel free to raise your hand and and come forward. Again, there are no public hearings tonight, so anything here at our public comment is pre-public hearing. And again, we'll welcome anyone who'd like to make a public comment this evening.
No hands up, Jesse.
Okay, thank you very much, Kat. So we'll move forward to the Employee of the Month portion of our meeting. And we have a nomination tonight by Bob Hand, who is the supervisor of the Building Maintenance Department. In addition to being our supervisor of the Building Maintenance Department, Bob is also one of our electricians who does a phenomenal job with all the holiday lights this past year and throughout the entire year for every need we might have, we might need him to do. So here's what Bob said. Bob said that he would like to nominate my entire crew, who seem to be the forgotten folks who work every snowstorm in the development. We have no warm to sit in, no warm truck to sit in while plowing, but we're out in the elements, shoveling, sizzling snow, running snow blowers in the cold with, you know, melting ice sidewalks in front of rear building, concentrating on keeping emergency services buildings open and safe for these folks to get into the buildings when there are emergency issues. We do it and we don't complain because it is our responsibility, and we'd like to recognize our entire department. And I thank Bob and wholeheartedly agree with him. There's no way we can simply nominate one individual employee tonight because there are so many employees across the village to thank. So thank you, Bob, for your recommendation. It is our pleasure to nominate the entire Building Maintenance Department, and we hope to do parks next as well. So thank you very much, Bob, and thank you to the entire Building Maintenance Group. So we'll move forward tonight. We have two board presentations. The first board presentation is a Proba Grievance Appeal. That's presented by Thomas Markle and PSD Dan Farrell. So Charlene, Ken, Tom, I'll turn this over to you, and you can take this from here.
Ms. Kat, could you please bring those three folks into the meeting?
Yeah, I'm bringing them in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ken and Thomas and was it Dan?
Yes.
Okay. 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 They're all in.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Tom, I'm going to turn this over to you so you can officiate.
Thank you. My name is Thomas Markle. My office is Labor Council for the Village, and there was a grievance filed by the Public Safety Dispatchers Organization, which is known as the South End Village Police Radio Operators Association, sometimes we call it Proba. And the grievance, the union has pursued the grievance and at this point has filed an appeal of the decision to the board. The board at the last meeting noticed a hearing on written submissions of the grievance. So the grievance will be heard on written submissions. We understand that the the Union Proba has submitted its its factual submissions and arguments, but the board is offering that opportunity to to the union or its representative to be heard tonight if it wishes to make additional comments, understanding that the board has received the submissions. After the the Proba's submissions, then the the board would would take submissions from the police department, any factual information they would have, or also write an argument that it may want to add within a reasonable period of time that it can respond after the the presentation today. I believe members of the board that the the Proba was invited to to be heard to the wish, to the extent that it wishes to be. And I think that some representatives from that organization are here tonight.
Yes, Dan Farrell and Ken Lockhart are the officers from the Union that would like to be heard to present to the board.
I guess I'll I'll speak first. I'm Dan Brown, the president of Proba. The first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Bob Hand and the maintenance crew because after I dig out of my driveway and I get to work, there's always a clear lot and somewhere for me to park. So thank you, thank you, Ben and the crew down there. But I think I'm going to defer to Ken Lockhart, who's the vice president, for an explanation. I think he has a good grasp on how to explain this, where you can understand, because it is a complex issue. And it's complex, and our latest submission, Exhibit I, kind of explains why it is complex. And if you could just pull that out just real quick before I give it over to Ken. So as you can see in Exhibit I, it says, please indicate your choice of holiday pay or time off. Please respond by December 23rd, 2016. And these are from the dates, these are for the dates of January 27, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. Okay, now if we go to the next one, you choose in December of 2017 for January of 2018. Okay. And then the next page, you choose for in December of 2018 for January of 2019. Next page, you choose in December of 2019 for from January 2020 to December 31st, 2020. So you you choose what you want the year before, all the way up until where we have an issue, which is in December of 2020. It says we're choosing January 1, and at that point it said 2021, but it was marked with a zero, and that's where the confusion lies. And what ultimately happened was we have a period of time where our employees did not receive holiday time, and they were not compensated for it. And it's that discrepancy which Ken can address and really really target. So I'll give it over to Ken.
Ken, we can't.
You're on on mute, Ken.
No, he's not on mute. He's got an issue with his computer. Try turning the sound up on your computer, sir. Nope. Re-log in again. Sometimes that helps. We'll see you in a few seconds. Okay, thank you. Okay, he's back. I'll bring him back over. Okay. Ken, can we hear you now? I can't hear you. I don't know what to tell you. Okay.
Kat, can he call in?
Yeah, he can.
So just explain.
On the on the invite, there's a telephone number, and you can leave your picture up where it is, and you can call in, and I will bring your phone over, and you can talk in that. So.
Thank you. In the interim is is our acting chief, Suharto here, or Lieutenant Wetter?
Yes. Bring him over.
Maybe we can, we'll wait for Ken. What do you think about this? Should we wait for Ken Lockhart, or should we have?
You you can you can bring him over now. Tom, I don't want to interrupt, but I think you can bring him over now, but I think you should let the the Union, you know, make their presentation.
Okay, all right, we can stand by. Ken, take your time. Whenever you're ready, we'll we're ready for you.
Mr. Lockhart, do you need the phone number?
He said yes. Yeah, so I have to go and get it.
Ken, look at the look at the email. There's a it should be, it should be in the email. Can you access the one from your phone?
And I've got it for you. I can read this, read this out to you here. It is area code 929 2056099. So again, that's area code 9292056099.
Perfect.
And he may have to enter the webinar ID number.
You got, just look at your phone.
What webinar ID number Ken is 83244313084. Again, that's 83244313084. Hopefully that works for Ken.
All right, here it comes again. Okay. Where is he? Okay. You're in, Ken. Can you unmute? Okay, can you speak? Again, okay, so I don't know what the issue is. I don't know what the issue is.
Is is did he call in or not?
He's, he said he's gonna do something.
I think he's gonna break his computer.
Yep, probably. Maybe he's getting another computer. I'm not sure. All right, in the interim, what will you like to do?
Dan, why don't you have him call you and maybe you could.
All right, let's try freeway calling.
Yeah.
Ken, Ken, if you call Dan, we'll hear you on his phone. He's calling you.
It looks like he has a new laptop.
Yeah.
Where he could zoom in on his phone.
All right, hold on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute. I'm gonna mute you. Actually, you mute, you mute your screen. Can you do that? All right, and then I'll put you, so there's not feedback. I'm gonna put you on speaker right now, okay? So everybody's gonna be able to hear you. Okay, all right.
Anxiety level just went through the roof.
What? Nope, that's okay.
Perfect, we can hear him now.
You can. All right, Ken, go for it.
Okay, hello again. When our employees are hired, the usual practice is that they get credited for holidays retro, sorry, prorated for that year. The problem that we have is that in 2021, that didn't happen correctly. I'm out of breath going up and down the stairs. PSD Callahan was not credited for any holidays, nor did he take any holidays. And he was paid for seven. And that means that he owes six, or he he should receive six to make him whole, or 13. Same thing with PSD Babinski. He was paid for seven. He did not take any. And he is owed six to make 13. PSD Collins was hired in the middle of the year. Eight holidays were prorated for her. She was only paid for two of the eight, and she is owed six. Now, the rub here is the credits. You are credited at the beginning of the year for days that you are to take off. So the days that appear credited for those employees are actually for 2022, not 2021. You don't get credited for the days after the year is done. You get credited as the year starts. And you can see that with all the sheets that Dan had illuminated before.
And actually, for the last year. Ken, I would just like to go through that if we can.
Sure.
So I'm getting feedback. All right. So if you look at Brian Lamontica, the first year that he started, okay, he was given holiday time. If you look at Amani Wingfield, the first year that she was hired, she was given holiday time. If you look at Kristen Springsteen, the first year she was hired, she was given holiday time. If you look at Dan Farrell, myself, I was credited holiday time on my first year hire. And then in my second year, I got holidays for the follow, for that year. So for 2012, I had holidays. What what happened was and I and I guess the easiest way to do it would be just to start with Alfie Callahan. He started in October, or rather, September of 2020. He worked till the end, right? He's still currently employed. So in January, he received payment for the holidays that he worked. There's no problem there. He worked all of 21 without receiving any holiday time off and was only compensated for seven days. In our contract, we are given 13 holidays per year, and contractually, it says that it's supposed to be given, and the hours are a bit, I'm gonna avoid the hours just to not confuse you, but basically, they're given at the beginning of the year, more or less, right? With the consent and approval of the Chief of Police within, and they're to be used within the same calendar year. The payment for those days is to be the following year, right? So then that way you work the full calendar year before you receive any type of payment. Okay? Now, you can see with Exhibit E, Krista Babinski was not credited holiday time when he started. He did receive payment for the holidays that he did work, totally fine. The next year in 2021, he was not credited with any holiday time. In 2022, he was only paid for seven holidays. Where did the other six holidays go? If a village employee gets hired on July 2nd, they get July 4th off. But Proba has to work holidays, Christmas, Fourth of July, all of them. So we are credited the holidays upfront, similar to sick time, personal time, and yeah, sick time and personal time. But what happened in this situation is that these members were not given time off. So for a year and a half, the only time that they were able to use to spend with their families was personal time and sick time. And obviously, sick time you use when you're sick. So these 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 gentlemen only had four days off for a year and a half. And I'm the, I'm actually mad at myself for not catching this earlier because it's it's just not fair to the employees that this happened. Now, Alfie Callahan, as I described before, started in 2020. Right? He didn't get credited for holiday time, but he was paid appropriately. The following year in 2021, he did not get holiday time, and then was only paid for half, seven of the 13. So the past examples we showed were that there was no gap in holiday time. We did not have to work a full year in order to receive holiday time off. That's, that's how vacation time works. Tara Collins, Tara Collins is a different story. She worked from April of 21 to the end of 21, currently employed. She was paid for two days, so she worked a total of eight holidays. She was paid for two. What happened to the other six? In 2022, she gets six more holidays for the year of 2022. What happened to the 2021 holidays? So that's where we've tried to prove at exhaustion that there's something amiss here from past practice from the, at least from the time that I was hired, up until the time of our last hire prior to the new ones. And I believe that was 2015. That's how it was. And even now you might say, well, what happens if we give you the holiday time upfront and you use it before you actually get to those holidays? Now, that is a contractual thing that we can certainly work on during our contractual negotiations, but the reality of the situation is you hold the last paycheck. So if somebody worked time that they were not due, you would just remove those funds from that last paycheck.
Um, Kat, could you please let Sue and Chris into the meeting?
Yes.
You and Ken. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, so that's where, that's where the last exhibit comes in, to prove that, you know, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, this is all how we operated. And then all of a sudden, there was a change. Our contract didn't change. So that's where, that's where we have a little bit of a rub here. And Ken, is there anything that you want to add to that?
Um, now, that's what it boils down to. I made a spreadsheet that makes a graphic representation of what Dan just explained. The confusion is where 2021 went, because the credits occurred after the year was completed. So they, in fact, are for the next calendar year, which is 2022. And PSD Babinski was credited for six days for 2022, and he should not get any because he elected to get 13 paid holidays. He's not taking any holidays for 2022. So there's the confusion right there. 2021, the credits occur for that year in the beginning, and they get paid after that year is completed. Um, I could share my screen if you'd like to see the spreadsheet.
Yeah, Ken, Ken, go ahead and just show the screen if you can.
Okay. Can you see it?
Yes, Ken.
Okay, so this is just a graphic representation. 2021, everything was square. They were owed, Alfie was owed six, he got paid for six. Christian was owed five, he was paid for five, square. 2021, it happened. They did not get credited in January. So they went all year, did not take any holidays off, so they have 13 holidays that they are owed. Alfie was paid for seven, he's owed six. Christian was paid for seven, he's owed six. Tara, prorated, is eight for the year. She was paid for two, she's owed six. Now, the credits that appear in their ledger for 2022 are for 2022. That is six for Alfie, six for Tara, and again, Christian's six is a mistake. He's elected on that letter that you have in your bundle. He elected to get paid for all his holidays. So that should be returned zero, and he should be paid next January for 13 holidays. There's three of us, I think, that chose to get 13. And there's some notes that on the bottom that reflect what I just said. I hope that clears it up. It's a different take on things, but the information is the same.
All right, can you unshare your screen?
I can.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Dan or Ken, is there anything else that you would like to say this evening?
Uh, the only thing that I would add is if the if the village administration, the police administration feels that you have to work a full year to earn your holiday time, right? The only proof that I have that that's not the case is when PSD Reed resigned. So if their assumption is that you work all of 2020 to earn holidays for 2021, well, he did. He was credited with six holidays in the beginning of 21. He worked three additional holidays. He did not take any holiday time off. However, when he left, he was only paid for three holidays. If the assumption is that you work a full year of holidays to get holidays to use for the next year, then he should have been paid for nine. However, he was not, which just means at some point they agreed with us and that you only get paid for what you work at the end of the year.
Well, just.
Any questions about that?
I believe that that PSD Reed left, and he wouldn't get paid for holidays where he was not in the village employment.
Correct. He wasn't, he was employed for three of those holidays.
Correct. And he was paid those three holidays. Yes.
Exactly.
He was paid the following January for those holidays he worked in the prior year.
Exactly. And that is, that is our point. He was credited with six. If the if the if the village police administration believes that you have to work a full year of holidays in order to get the holiday time off the following year, so you have to work all of 2020 to accrue time to take holidays in in 2021, then those six days should have went with him. But they did not, because that's not how we operate. That's, okay, I can see some confused faces. Okay.
Thank you.
So if he's Mr. Mayor, you have a question?
Please go, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So the village police administration feels you have to work the full year before you earn holiday time off. If you earn those days, then the village cannot take them away from you. So the days that Mike Reed earned to take off in 2021, he was not paid for going by what they believe. But what we believe is that you are credited upfront for that time and you have to work the full year before you receive any payment. Mike Reed did not work a full year. He worked three months and three holidays. He was appropriately paid for three holidays. I know it's a little much, but the exhibit I kind of illustrates how this works. We choose in 21 for what we want in 22, and then we get paid all the way in 23. We have to work the full year. So it's a little confusing, and that's why I tried my best to to give this to you in the most simplified way I could.
Thank you.
Dan, did you say something?
Well, it's just that we still have to account for those six days for those three employees. So that's 18 days that don't exist for 2021. And that's why we have...
All right. Thank you very much. And I just, again, I wanted to also clarify, just for those who are watching and may see this. This is, we haven't done anything like this in a while. So myself and the Board of Trustees, we are essentially listening to the union members as well as the department heads. And it is our job to make a decision based upon the facts that we gather. And so I'll open this up to questions from our board after we have the presentation from Lieutenant Wetter and our Acting Chief Hurtow. So again, we are here in the capacity of jury, if you will. And we are here essentially to listen. So this is our role. So if there's no further comments or questions from Proba, I would like to open this up to our Acting Chief Hurtow and Lieutenant Wetter for your input as well.
If I could, Maher?
Please.
This is just the hearing is is being conducted on written submissions and the union has submitted. It's spreadsheets, it's evidence and arguments. And of course, it was given the opportunity to be heard this evening. And I believe that the procedure would be for the the Police Department within an appropriate period of time, reasonable period of time to submit its factual submissions and arguments. And then the board will just make a determination within 30 days of the date. Just for the procedural, I agree with you completely. This is unusual and it has not occurred in many years, this proceeding. So it's somewhat new territory, but the recommended procedure or the procedure that was noticed today was that we'll be hearing on written submissions. So the department will be submitting written submissions, but the Chief Hurtow and Lieutenant Wetter are here. And if they would like to comment, I believe that would be appropriate with the board's permission.
Please, that would be very helpful.
If I could, one more, I apologize. There was an exhibit which Mr. Farrell, Public Safety Dispatcher Farrell showed. And if they have not submitted that to the board, I believe they may want to do that at this point. Our role here is just to make sure that the board has the written submissions. I'm not sure if that was one of the exhibits that was submitted. If it was, then that's great. If it's an additional submission, the document that was screen shared should be forwarded to the village administrator for submission to the board.
Okay, all documents were submitted except for that last screenshot, so that will be immediately forwarded.
Thank you very much. So Lieutenant Wetter or Acting Chief Hurtow, would you like to present at this point or provide us with some more information?
Yeah, I'm gonna start and then I'm gonna turn it over to Lieutenant Wetter because he really has been dealing with this from the beginning. I'm gonna start out by reading you part of their contract. It's page 11 of the current Proba contract. And it says, "Payment for holidays shall be based on the previous calendar year. The member must be employed on each holiday to receive payment for said holiday. Payments for holidays shall be made in the first pay period of January 1st of the contract year." The police officer's contract, we have to wait to get our holidays as well if we elect. And it's only the first time you do it. So for instance, Alfie Callahan, I'm sorry. Christian Babinski, who was hired in October, that prior year from January of 2020, he didn't work. He started in October, so therefore he would not be entitled to anything other than five holidays. They're not front loaded. They're not front loaded on the PD side either. They're prorated for when they start. And sometimes when they start, they're not signing up on the signup sheet because that has passed. Sometimes they start, they're signing up on the signup sheet for the next calendar year. But they're not going to get their time unless they worked the prior year. And Lieutenant Wetter can explain it more thoroughly in a way that you can understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and the rest of the board. I appreciate the opportunity. Basically, when incidents like this happen, we have to go back to the contract and read the words and language of the contract. And like Chief said, you know, payment for those holidays shall be based on the previous calendar year. And the member must be employed on each holiday to receive payment for said holiday. So when we look at, let's see, we'll look at Alfie Callahan first. Alfie was hired in September and started on the 5th of 2020. So from January 1st of 2020 to September, he's not credited for any of that time. He was not employed, so he doesn't get credit for that time. The time that he was credited for was from September 5th to December 29th, at the end of the year. He was credited for six holidays and was paid for six holidays. In 2021, he worked the full year. He had to work the entire year to get credited for any time. He had to work all of that time to get the credit. He was then on his signup sheet, the way he wanted it to be delivered to him would be seven days pay and six credited. He's got seven days pay, which he received in his paycheck. And he's got the six hours actually. His was different because he's a midnight officer and he gets a 10-hour shift. So his 60 hours was credited in his bank. So he's whole. Tara Collins is easy. She started in 2021. She started on April 11th. And so from April 11th to the end of December, she was entitled to eight holidays. She selected the half and half. She was given six hours on her chart, which is, actually, I'm sorry, 48 hours, which is six days. And then the two days, which would make it eight, she was paid for. Babinski, very similar. Started in October of 2020. So from October 2020 to December, the end of the year, he was only credited with five. He received payment for those five. He had to work the entirety of 2021 to get any credit for holidays because you must be employed on each holiday to receive payment for said holiday. Worked all 21. He requested the half and half, we call it. He received a paycheck or a check for his seven hours. And his time was credited in his bank, his 48 hours or six days was credited in his time off bank. So as far as we're concerned, everyone is whole. We're interpreting the contract like we have in the past. Because I am somewhat new to this, I reached out to Captain Mike Ryan, who retired in the spring, just to make sure that I was interpreting this correctly. He said that everything that I was doing was correct. I can say about Mike Reed. Mike was, he left his employment with the Village of Southampton in March. He was credited with three holidays. He was given those holidays and pay. In his bank was six days. And in his payout at the end of his career, when he left, separated himself from service, he was paid for that time. So he was made whole. And that was actually something that Charlene and myself discussed.
Am I allowed to speak?
I believe so, Tom. I mean, we could use your assistance here, but again, we just want to be able to hear all of the facts and perspectives and have an opportunity for board questions, but...
So when Mike Reed left, he was paid for three days. He was not paid for the six plus the three days. He worked three, he was paid for three, that's fine. Where Chief Hurtow said they're not front loaded, we provided multiple examples to show where the person was hired and provided holidays within that year. That would be the example of where hard proof that they were at one point, front loaded. So Brian LaMonica in 2007, Amani Wingfield in 2010, Dan Farrell in 2011, Kristen Springsteen in 2011, Amanda Lindsay in 2015, those were front loaded holidays.
Guys, we have to understand that the language of the contract changed in 2011 to the current language. So that's what we follow. Some of those employees that he's naming were hired prior to 2011. And things may have been different, but unfortunately, we have to go by the contract that's in front of us.
Amanda Lindsay was hired in 2015. She was the most recent. And that was well after 2011. And you're supposed to take, again, within the contract, we're supposed to take these holidays within the same calendar year. I don't know how that equates to holding holidays over until the next year. Now, the payment for the holidays based on the previous calendar year, 100%, totally understand that. Alfie worked all of 2021 and he was compensated for six days. In our contract, it says that we get 13 holidays. So if we have to use them within the same calendar year and the holidays are paid on the previous, right? So, you know, looking back, then he should have been paid for the 13 because he never was credited for any time off in that whole year. He never had a holiday off. So this is like...
Because he had to work all of them. You have to be employed to receive the payment for said holiday.
Now... And then that's where the issue lies, right? So we have an employee that goes a year and a half and only the ability to use four personal days for his time off. We never had this problem prior to 2021. So clearly, there's past precedent that supports Proba. And the only thing that I can say would support the police argument in this has been written over.
If I could, again, just as a reminder, this is a hearing being conducted on written submissions. And we appreciate the additional information provided from Mr. Farrell and Lieutenant Wetter, as well as Sir Lockhart. At this point, I believe that the board will take the arguments under advisement. We'll be receiving written submissions from the Police Department within a reasonable period of time, approximately seven days from today. And then within 30 days from today, we'll issue a decision based on all of the information presented by the Public Safety Dispatches Association, Proba, as well as the Police Department.
So can I just have one, I have one final question, right? So if you say Alfie works all of 2021 for the holidays that he gets in 2022, when does he get his final payout? Is that when he retires in so many years where the money is not your first step, it's now your last step? And then on top of that, if that, I lost my train of thought. But yeah, basically, if not, if he's not gonna get paid now, when is he gonna get paid for those days? Because he's gonna be a heck of a lot more at the end of his career than now. And then if that was the case, if he had to work the full year and hold it over in his bank to use for the next year, then why was Reed not compensated for nine holidays? That's it.
I just want to end on something. I think we're making this more confusing than it really has to be. And I think that once we sit down with the attorney and do our submissions and give something written to the board along with whatever Proba sends over to you, I think that it'll be clearer. But I think doing this right now, going back and forth, is counterproductive. And I think it's just making something that's very simple, very, a lot more confusing.
Thank you. I would second that. I did want to thank the union members from Proba and also members from our Police Department who are here today. I know everyone works very hard and serves the village in the highest possible way. And I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. I know, as Tom Markley said, this hasn't been conducted in a while. But again, wanted to thank everybody for their time and for their hard work. And, you know, I look forward to working with everybody and the board as well to hopefully come to a well-informed decision. So thank you very much, everybody. And just wanted to say we look forward to the rest of the written submissions and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. So we will continue with the meeting. Our second board presentation is the presentation of the Thanks, Tom. The 2022-2023 tentative budget. And this was the budget. It was checked in with the Clerk's office today. I want to reiterate that this is not the public hearing. We'll be noticing out a public hearing, which will be required. But there are certain steps, which I'll let Charlene Kegelbets, who's our village administrator and village treasurer, talk about. These are steps that are outlined in understanding the budget process that's produced by the Office of the New York State Controller and the Division of Local Government and School Accountability. So we look forward to detailing the budget and presenting the budget in its entirety at the public hearing. Tonight, we wanted to put everybody and let everyone know and inform everybody that this budget is available. It is there for the public. Our trustees should look at this budget and make sure that they are well-informed in it for our public hearing. Now, a few things I'll say before I turn this over to Charlene. Last year, among many important achievements, and obviously, we've made very clear that we care very much about our businesses, about the revitalization of our downtown, about water quality and the environment, as well as preserving the historical integrity of the village. But one really important thing is the lowering and maintaining taxes, making sure that we make sure we have a pristine balance sheet, paying down debt, increasing our operating budget surpluses. paying down debt, increasing our budget, operating budget surpluses, eliminating, eliminating and reducing long-term liabilities and long-term debt. We've, we've made this the, one of the hallmarks of, of this board and this administration. So we're, we're very pleased that in this, in this budget, we're, despite a eleven percent increase in health insurance premiums that we've spoken about a number of times, that this budget that will go in front of our public hearing will actually put a tax rate freeze for village property owners. And this comes after last year, where we had a, not only a reduction in the tax rate for the first time in twenty years, but a reduction in tax levy, reducing year-over-year spending for the first time. Anywhere we can find any evidence of that. So I, I think that this is a good thing. And there's a lot in this budget that we look forward, potentially at our public hearing and, and, and doing a a more thorough analysis of, but I wanted to make sure that we give, we give Charlene an opportunity to speak about this, and we'll have our Budget and Finance Committee at the public hearing also present. But I think the overarching theme here is that our, our job, our board, is to put this tax freeze in place. Again, we look forward to speaking about that. And then I would also echo some of the thoughts that I've learned. I recently joined the Board of SCOVA, the Suffolk County Village Official Association, and a lot of other municipalities, other mayors, other boards, given some inflationary pressures, given the rise of health insurance premiums, are actually struggling right now to keep under the tax cap. Many municipalities may be piercing the tax cap. And so the fact that we can put forward a budget that actually freezes the tax rate, I think could be a very substantial achievement in this environment. That said, I, I'll turn this over to Charlene, again, a Village Administrator and Treasurer, but I want to make sure we focus on diving in a bit more substantially with more detail at the public hearing. We just want to, want to let everyone know that this is available. We are also early, so I wanted to thank Charlene, Julie, the Budget and Finance Committee, for putting this ahead of schedule. This is due at the end of the month, and we are well ahead of schedule. I know when I first took office and, and what I saw before I was an elected official, was that the village often struggled to get this in early. We are early, we're ahead of schedule, and, and I think that's also a really good thing. But again, I'm, I'm excited to talk about this budget. I also want to lay out some themes that I would like this board to try to achieve, if we are to make any amendments to it. But anyway, I'll turn this over to, to Charlene for, for some thoughts here. And again, wanted to thank our, our board, Budget and Finance Committee, Charlene, Erin, Julie, et cetera, everyone who, and Miranda, everyone who worked, worked hard on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to share my screen. The budget process starts every year in January. If you remember, last year, we implemented a cloud-based system called Questica. Last year, Julie and I kept the budget in-house. We took the submissions that were manually given to us from the department heads, and we entered them into the program because it was such a new program. We had, you know, implemented it in a very short time, timeframe. This year, we rolled the budget out to the department heads, and they actually were able to log in and enter their own budgets. They all thought it was a great process. They also liked the fact that they can go back during the year and make reference to it. They did very detailed zero-based budget. We continued our, our zero-based budget where the department heads would build their budgets from the ground up. So the process is the, the tentative budget due in March. We stamped it into the Clerk's Office today. It will be available online tomorrow. And we also have the hard copies for the board. We have a few extra hard copies. Also, we will be having tonight a resolution to schedule the public hearing on, on April fourteenth, which will be the public hearing on the budget. We'll actually get into, do, take a deep dive into the budget that evening and present all of the elements. This is just a summary overview. Also, we will be, the capital budget is also included. So there'll be some discussion, I believe the board will have some discussion and amendment to the capital budget that's presented in this document as well. We also have a, at the end of that public hearing, the board may or may not decide to continue it to the following meeting in April, but the budget will need to be adopted no later than April thirtieth, because this budget will become, by operation of law, the adopted budget by May first. So generally, we either have the public hearing, the first meeting, and continue it, or we would, we could close the public hearing if everyone is satisfied with the budget document in its entirety, and the board decides that they want to move forward, they can adopt that evening. So I'm going to share my screen and just go over a few things.
Charlene, before we do the slides, I, I'd like to reserve the slides for the public hearing. I just wanted to put the community and, and the board and, and, and those on notice. As far as these slides, which are available to the public, these slides that we like to do, this is something I'd like to reserve for our, our public hearing. We're a bit early in the process. We're happy we're early, we did a great job. We worked very hard, but want to make sure that we, we do this at the public hearing, might be a bit premature. We're excited to, to announce this, but just want to make sure we do it at that public hearing, rather, so the, the, the public has an opportunity to comment and see it and be noticed for it, rather than do it at a board presentation tonight.
That's fine.
And the other thing I wanted to add is when we do have our, our, our public hearing, I would like to keep the public hearing focused on the operating budget. We were very proud to roll out the capital budget, the three-year plan. I think that before we make any changes to that three-year plan, I'd like our Budget and Finance Committee to, to, to do a little more, more work on that. So I really would like to focus on the operating budget at this time. An operating budget that, that looks like we're headed in the right, right direction. And then the other thing is, as we look into this, I wanted to ask the board, or let the board know there's a couple of things that I'd like for them to consider as we look at this budget and future budgets moving forward. The first thing is, I, one thing that has troubled, that, that has, we recognize as an issue, is the long-term liabilities, largely OPEB. And I would like our board to really continue to focus on that. And I'd like our board to also look into our current Southampton Village healthcare policies and procedures to make sure that it's both fair to the village residents who pay the taxes, as well as to those who, who work here. The second thing I'd like us to look into is the procurement policies and procedures. There are some best practices, those that we are in the, that we have, some we have adopted, some we should move forward. But I believe that the village could also continue to improve the, the procurement policy and procedures. The third thing, as we approach the public hearing, is that I'd like us to look at our overtime and mechanisms and putting those in place so that we can better control our overtime. This is something that was brought up in one of the studies that we, that we commissioned. And, and that's my fourth topic, which is actually implementing and enacting on many of the reports that either this board or prior boards have voted unanimously on, and future studies that we might get. I know Trystine McGlocklin said we pay for all these studies, it's time we actually do something with them. So I, I would agree with you there. And then also, one thing that I think could make sense in this budget is to make sure that we have a, a contingency fund for retirement contributions. As we all look at the stock market and other types of markets these days, we know that they're headed in the wrong direction with everything going on in the world and economic changes that are, that are occurring in our country. So I think it's really important that, that we make sure we have ample contingency. Again, we were hit pretty hard with the eleven percent increase in the healthcare premiums. And that was, that was a challenge, but we're able to get through that. But I also want to make sure that we are in good, good shape for future years by making sure that we have a nice contingency. So those are some of my points that I want the board to think about as we move forward to having our public hearing. So I know we're having a bit of a discussion. I'm happy to, to have anyone make any additional comments or, or whatnot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I think it would be important this evening, since we said that this document is available, and we just made an announcement that we're so, you know, we are ahead of schedule on this. And in light of the fact that Budget and Finance, Charlene, Julie, myself, we've been working very hard on this. And I would like to see a couple of the slides that Charlene prepared. And we don't have to go into detail, Charlene, but perhaps some of the, I don't know what you had, prepared to, to share on the screen, but if we could see some of those pie charts, I think it would be just great to let the public know.
All right, I was, I was hoping to present that at the public hearing.
I know, but I'd like to, I think it'd be just a good idea, just to, just a couple of things, so people know the basics of where the money comes from, and we don't have to go into detail. I didn't know what Charlene had prepared, but without much detail, we could save that for the public meeting. But just generally speaking, you know, revenue and, and the budget appropriations.
Actually, we, we, we could, we would keep it quite brief tonight anyway. So I could just show basically the document, as is, as you, can you see the screen at this point?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this was the picture that Julie picked for, for Lake Agawam, which is the cover of the budget. And this basically is just the highlights. This was the only thing I was going to really present tonight, which basically talks about the fact that we have a tax rate freeze for the village. For this year, we kept the tax rate at the, the, the current rate. Zero-based budget continuation, so we're continuing the method that we use to prepare the budget. We have four, there's a four-year financial plan that was created for the operating budget, similar to some of the larger municipalities. That's a section of the budget as well. We will do, do a presentation on that. The proposed capital budget, we increased, there's some services that were increased. We added some additional TCOs and seasonal police officers, also added some funding for some seasonal code enforcement officers. In the fire department, we added a part-time clerical staff and ambulance department. There was a request for a full-time critical care EMT. In order to keep the budget at a freeze, we were unable to, to fulfill that request. But we did provide for a part-time added salary for a part-time critical care EMT that could be added for weekend coverage. We are going to implement this year, and we continued the implementation of the online property tax payments. We have a new planning division within the building department, a new planner. We have, in our budget, we have the new implementation, some of the, you know, increases in some of our expenditures. We improved the GOV pilot, implemented the GOV pilot land management and building department software, which is cloud-based program and helped to streamline and digitize the permit process upstairs, implementing the new online summer beach permits. We're going to begin phase one of online beach permits for visitor permits will be implemented for this beach season. We're going to also go cashless at the beach and have credit card payments as recommended by our auditors a few meetings ago. We continue with much activity and success with the Sea Click Fix program. And, you know, we have our other presentations. We're going to be finalizing the, the comprehensive master plan. And, you know, we're working on continuing, hopefully soon, having phase one of our Southampton downtown business sewer district implemented. And here, here's basically just the numbers, she, the sheet that kind of sums everything up. Expenses increased by about three percent. That's a combination of, you know, some attrition savings we had with some retirements. Also, the increase, as the mayor had mentioned, you know, a significant increase in health insurance. So, you know, we ended up with a three percent overall increase in expenditures. Some of our revenues have been consistently strong. I have some five-year history projections on those that I could share with the board. So we did increase some of our revenues, particularly, you know, mortgage tax and some contracts that were renewed for dispatch, et cetera. Our assessed valuation did have a little bit of growth. Last year, we were at about point seven-five percent. So we've doubled taxable assessment this year. So our tax levy did grow by one point four-two percent. And ironically, our taxable assessed value grew by one point four-two percent, therefore allowing us to freeze the tax rate. The tax levy cap for the village this year was twenty-six million, five hundred and twenty-five. Our tax levy came in about seven hundred thousand under that. So we're still well under the tax levy. And I think that's about, that about sums it up. Those were the only charts that we had presented for this evening.
All right, thank you, Charlene. Again, I, I will, we're going to present this in its entirety at our, at our public hearing in April, as we did last year. We're a little bit early here, and I appreciate being proactive and getting this done. I don't know if the board has any, any questions, maybe Charlene, I know you wanted to further talk about the budgetary process as to kind of, if there are any other, you know, I don't, educate the public just a bit as far as what everyone's roles are here, but not necessary. We can also talk about this at the, at the public hearing. But, you know, open this up to any, any questions or comments from the board.
No, I, I'd just like to, I was very much a part of this process. But Charlene, I think this is fabulous. When I think of a tax freeze, just like the mayor said, the other municipalities are having difficulty at this time with the economy and the way everything, what's happening out there. And it's very, not only is it responsible, but to me, a tax freeze is like, these days is a tax decrease with what's going on. Julie is fantastic. She's, she's always there, a phone call away, and she comes running down in your office and you work things out. And Erin, but also a big dues to Len Zanotti of the Budget and Finance Committee, which I am liaison for. And I think he's just, he's the budget, budget czar, Len, and he is. And Miranda, she works very, very hard behind the scenes always. And also a big dues to all the department heads that contributed and did their budget, zero-based budgeting, and they all went on the computer and did what they were supposed to do. And I was a little skeptical about that, but it worked out beautifully. So as the mayor said, next, next meeting of the public hearing, we'll get more into the, understanding the, the guide and understanding the budget process that's put out by the Office of the New York State Controller. And as I said, I'll get into that next time, because there are certain things in here that were followed by the T. And I think it's a, a, a great piece of work here. So thank you all that were involved.
Thank you. All right, so if, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. If not, we'll move forward with communications to the board. The first correspondence we have is from the Halsey Net Coalition. And that has to do with some of the surf schools and, and, and some, some comments there. So we look forward to addressing this, as we'd like to make quality of life a big priority in the village, as we continue to do so, while also keeping our village healthy and, and active. So to those residents, we will be absolutely looking into your comments, the village, and we'll be working hard to make sure that we can help all groups in every way possible. There's also some communications to the board tonight that I'd like to just read. Some are with resolutions, so we'll get to those. There's a, there's a, a submission about bikes tonight, about biking lanes from our Climate Action Committee. Charlene, is that something that we'd like to read into the record? I know, I believe Sheila is here. I'd be, be happy to read that. We can get to that later. Would just love some guidance as to whether this should be done now or later in tonight's meeting.
Do you want Sheila in?
I'm sure Sheila, if, if, if she'd like to commit, if not, I'm happy to, to read it. I don't want to put, put her on the spot. I'd be happy to read the communication. But if she would like to raise her hand, yes. But if she would like to raise her hand, yes, we'd love to have her.
She's, she's coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi Sheila, you're in. If you can start your camera.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to get my, I would be happy to read the letter or to just talk about the project. I'm trying to get my letter up, but it's not here, of course.
Sheila, we also have the, the letter and it's part of the public record. So if you'd like to maybe just talk about it in general, that could be helpful too.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking me a little ahead. I see it's in the resolutions later on. As you probably know, our village climate committee, our climate action committee has been working on a number of important issues, but what I like to call bikeability is one of the things we've been working on in a couple of different ways. We've had a consultation with the master plan consultants and we're able to contribute some valuable ideas for bike lanes and we're looking forward to seeing how that gets incorporated into the master plan when they make their presentation at the end of the month. But in addition to that, we brainstormed different ways that we thought we could increase interest in biking and increase the safety of biking in the village. And we came up with the idea of holding an event that would highlight a route and we're calling it an historic route through Southampton Village and couple that with some talks and demonstrations about safety. So we partnered with the History Museum and we've had very fruitful meetings with Tom Edmonds and his staff and our committee and representatives from the Southampton African American Museum by, by email. And we've also consulted with some representatives from the Shinnecock Nation so that we get all voices heard. And I think, and I'm not going to go through the route place by place. You have all the information there including a, literally a turn-by-turn description of the route, but it takes people from the History Museum up and around the village to the Southampton African American Museum. There's a beautiful bike path that goes at the top of Hillcrest there over to North Bishop and it'll bring them down Moses and they'll be able to see the new park there. And then out to Hill Street and down to First Neck and out to the beach if they want to do the full loop down South Main past Halsey House and then back to the History Museum. So the full, the full loop is about eight miles. Not everyone will want to do that. We see this as a family event. You can stop and start at any point along the way. And in Agawam Park, we are in discussion with the police, the Southampton Public Community Outreach Police in order to get their expertise to do some, I don't want to call them lectures, that sounds a little intimidating for a Sunday afternoon in the park. I guess we'll call them demonstrations of, you know, safety issues like how to put your helmet on, riding on the right and all that. We plan to publish the map as a trifold that people can hold in their hand, but it will also be available digitally since we know that's how a lot of people do things too. And I think we'll publish enough maps so that it can be placed in Village Hall, Chamber of Commerce, any businesses that might be interested, and it will be a resource for our visitors and our residents alike. You know, for the rest of the biking, biking months. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I should say that this is not a tour. We're not having someone on a bike leading a group of people. That would be too dangerous on our village streets, especially since we don't have bike lanes yet. This is simply a map that describes a route and we will have, on that day, we will have wand signs to make sure people know the route. But there won't be huge clumps of people together. It's designed to be done, you know, individually, I guess you could say, or as a family. And we will be stressing that everyone needs to ride on the right, single lane, et cetera, et cetera. Any questions?
Sounds great.
Sounds great as well. I'm looking forward to participating in it. Again, that's May 29th.
May 29th, which is Memorial Day weekend and it's a Sunday only from 1:00 to 4:00. You know, pretty limited time, but as I say, it'll have lasting application. If it does rain that day, we would like to just do it the next Sunday, June 5th, from 1:00 to 4:00.
Thank you, Sheila. So May 29th, rain day, June 5th, 1:00 to 4:00 Sunday afternoon. Thank you very much for your hard work and the Climate Action Committee's hard work. Again, if any members of the board have any other questions or comments, but this is exactly what we love to see and we're very appreciative of your, your hard work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Thanks again. Have a good night. Okay, we'll keep things moving. There are some other communications to the board which are in our packet, but we'll get to those in the suggested resolution. So Charlene, I'll, I'll pass this over to you as we move through our resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number one resolved that the claims for the warrant dated March 10th, 2022 totaling $1,268,675.45 warrant A14 General Fund, $6,377.34 warrant CS5, CS Special Trust Fund, and $3,275 for warrant T18 Trust Fund be audited and approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. I noticed that the fluid imagery bill is $2,618 and it's usually, any reason why it's, why it's so high and, and it's been high a lot, actually.
Well, what's happened, Mayor, is usually $1,800, $1,880 of that bill was the renewal of all of the Microsoft Office subscriptions for the Police Department. Those all come due this early part of the year, so they have to pay those upfront. So we all have, and we have a couple of upcoming upgrades here as well. One of the I, our, our renewal of cyber insurance actually came up and the former policy that we had for our cybersecurity policy was $5,000, the expiring policy. That company's no longer providing service. And so we had to shop around. Tom Crowley, who's our broker for Epic, from Epic Insurance, identified three different companies, we're probably going with Travelers because that, they were the, on the low end of the premium with the most coverage. And it's actually $35,000. So the, I, you know, astronomically high cyber insurance and that is industry-wide. So one of the things that we're going to do to counteract that is to upgrade to the latest version of Microsoft Office, which will have a multi-factor authentication. So when we sign into our Windows every morning, instead of just putting in a password, we will actually have a code that's texted on our cell phones and we'll have to enter that code and we're going to get a considerable discount on our insurance. So there's going to be a little bit of upfront cost, but we're going to save every year down the road. And cyber awareness, we just had our training village-wide. Cybersecurity is a hot topic now with what's going on over in the Ukraine and Russia. So we're trying to keep ahead of the curve and make sure that we are at the latest cutting edge of security here at the village.
Thank you very much. I, I, that's very helpful. I think that it'd be also helpful if we can look at various companies who, you know, provide these IT and other types of technology support services just to make sure that we have really good and competitive pricing. We really enjoy working with fluid imagery, but also want to make sure that we're being even more responsible to the village taxpayer. That was my other question. That was one question. Then there's another invoice for VHB for $41, $41.26 that the traffic study or is that something?
That would be the restrooms. We had them do some work over at the restrooms at Agawam. And they also did some work on the World War, I think that was the World War I Memorial. So that is for, for those two expenses.
Got it. Okay.
And I am planning on doing an RFP for IT services, probably in April.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Yeah, any others? Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number two, resolve the reading of the minutes for the public session of February 22nd, 2022 be dispensed with and the minutes are accepted and as filed with the village clerk and the actions taken at the meeting are hereby ratified and approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, that the Board of Trustees approves the date change for the April Board of Trustees meeting from April 14th to April 12th, 2022, starting time at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Quick discussion. I'm just curious, that's why we're changing it? Because I wasn't aware of this, why?
It's actually Holy Thursday. There, if there is a conflict with some religious ceremonies, so that's why we changed it. And I did make it, I made a reference to our public, our public hearing being on the 14th, when it's actually on the 12th. erroneously before, so. All right, so all in favor? Resolution number four, the Board of Trustees appoints Tajia Anderson to the position of temporary senior office assistant in the Building Department at an hourly rate of $26 effective March 11th, 2022. This is actually a requested change from civil service. They had her as a a temporary clerk and the title had changed in, in civil service. So we, it's just more of a correction. So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Resolve, resolution number five, resolve the Board of Trustees authorizes the Southampton Village Ocean Preparedness Program Junior Lifeguard Training Ages 11 through 14 to be held at Cooper's Beach on Saturday mornings from July 9th to, to August 6th, 2022, from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. Funding for the 2022 Cooper's Beach budget, in the Cooper's Beach budget in the amount of $7,000 will be utilized to fund the program. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number six, resolve the Board of Trustees authorizes the Southampton Village Ocean Preparedness Preparation Program, the Grom Squad Ages 9 to 10, to be held at Cooper's Beach on Saturday mornings from July 9th to August 6th, from 10:15 AM to 11:00 AM. Funding, is it funding available in the 2022 Cooper's Beach budget in the amount of $7,000 to be utilized to fund this program? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Quick discussion, Charlene. I actually just going back to this $7,000 appropriation for each, each group here, is there a, a budget for this 7,000?
Actually, the 7,000, yes, there is a budget that was submitted by Christine Brennan and the budget basically covers the cost. We also have registration fees. Last year, the registration fees came in in excess of the cost of the, of the budget. So they, they will, we proved the budget this year. Last year we had to do a budget amendment because it wasn't in the budget. So last year I could submit the, the budget from Ms. Ms. Brennan for the program, but she does do a detailed budget.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
I.
Our resolution number seven, the Board of Trustees approves the second annual Juneteenth Ceremony to be held at Agawam Park on Sunday, June 19th at 10:00 AM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Quick discussion. Shouldn't it be the third? Shouldn't it be the, the third annual, not the second? I believe it is the third annual, not the second annual.
I am unsure of that, but.
I believe it started in 2020. I believe, I believe it's the third annual. I believe, I could be wrong.
How do we, should we maybe proceed and we can always amend that later if we find out it is the.
Yeah.
That's fine. I just want to make that one clip, that one quick. I.
All in favor? Any opposed? But resolution number eight, whereas the town of Southampton has awarded the village a grant for the Old Town Pond constructed wetland project in the amount of $136,500, 100% of project cost and the contracts for the grant have now been executed. And whereas the village has received a proposal for rural environmental engineering to perform this work, which is specialized in nature and was submitted with the town of Southampton grant proposal, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized the mayor or his designee to execute the contract with rural environmental to perform the work for this grant-funded project. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number nine, resolve that the Board of Trustees in accordance with Village Code Chapter 101 tennis courts approves the implementation of a new electronic entry system to reduce unauthorized use and amends the fees for the use of the village tennis courts as follows. A permit will be $25 per individual player, $10 per additional family member with a $150 refundable deposit for a keyless entry fob. The effective date of this new change will be May 30th, 2022 and be it further resolved that in accordance with the Village Code Chapter 101-4, the Village Board restricts the use of the village tennis courts for tennis recreational tennis use only. Commercial or paid tennis professional use is hereby prohibited. Is there a motion?
Do you know, like, make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Discussion. I'm just curious, shouldn't this be a public hearing because it's, we're changing the code, shouldn't this be a public hearing for this?
No, you're, you're not actually changing the code. Under the, under the Village Code, the section speaks of the Village Board of Trustees by resolution allowing to set rules and procedures for the use of the tennis court. So.
We're also forbidding commercial use, which is fine, but isn't that an exception in the code? Because there's no provision for commercial activity at this time, I believe.
Well, there's no provision for it, but the Village Board by resolution can set the rules and regulations. And if the rule and regulation is no commercial use of those fields, you can do it by resolution.
Trust me, Glock, I'm just curious, what, just maybe you could help us clarify your, your position on this.
I'm just going by the communication the board had with some of the residents in the area and I also believe that a expensive key fob is, is a, not going to do, not going to solve the problem. I think we should also pardon regulations on that call to say, to regulate, you know, there's several avenues we can go down to to solve this issue, but I think to investing in this technology, I think is a bit preemptive. I understand the work, but you know, I only, it's going to solve the issue of the chronic commercial activity that, that happens on, on that court. So also, I was, if we're going to be raising the fees, we should consider having the fees be higher for non-residents. I'm sure people from outside the village potentially could be using it. So if you're not, if you're not a resident, I would suggest that we, ways have higher fees for non-residents versus, versus a resident. Those are my, those are my suggestions.
Um, can I, does, does the code, I think the code only permits resident use, correct?
I, I believe it's only resident use and if you put a fob system in place, a, a non-resident will not get a fob and won't have access.
And Brian, referring to, you know, I, I, I sincerely doubt that some of these people, because I, I did see some pictures of cars from Florida and so forth. So, so, you know, I'm just raising the question that, that there could be some, that there could be some potential issue there. When you're really talking about resident versus a. When you really talking about resident versus a commercial use and so forth. And I do think spending the money for this key fob is kind of throwing my mind at the window, but that's my personal opinion. But um, I'm and isn't there two gates on the property?
One gate is used for maintenance, so that gate would be locked and only accessed for those that do maintenance on the uh tennis court. And as far as the parking is concerned, that's one of the problems is that it's there's commercial usage there. So when uh other tennis courts get filled or they're giving lessons, people go to that area. And that's why there's a traffic or a parking problem there. So you sometimes you'll see four or five cars, because yes, I've seen the pictures as well, Joe. But you have to have some sort of controls in place, and this is a start. I know many people that have that are that we're having a permit. How are we gonna control? We can't have somebody there checking to make sure you have a permit to play on that tennis court. So this would control outsiders coming in uh that are not village residents. So and and also people we know or have a permit that are permitted to to play there are the ones that are playing there. So this will be a deterrent for those who are not uh residents to play there. So it was an ongoing problem last year. Uh, and uh, we had to amend the code to uh specifically say here, commercial or paid professional use is hereby prohibited. It's for recreation, recreational use only. So we could also put a sign there. Uh, so if those people are not aware of that, they will be aware of it now because the sign will be going up as well. But in order to have, you have to have some system of control there, which most tennis courts do have that, that they're in neighborhoods or or on developments and um um, we we need something to help uh the ordinance inspector enforce the code.
So who's gonna hold the who's gonna hold the key?
And also, that was a very, it's not that expensive, this system at all. And it also control, you'd have to hand in the fob at the end of the year, you get your hundred and fifty dollars back, and then the code is changed in the fob. So it's not a one shot deal with the fob. This will last, this system will last for many, many years. So Bob Hand and Gary Gilleski did a lot of research on this. And this was the best avenue to go, and it's it's really uh not a lot of money at all uh to put this type of system in.
Um, I again, I just also like to see uh um maybe bring two hour parking there to also limit the uh the time people can park there. Because if there is an issue, which it is for some of the residents over there, I do think we should, in addition to the sign, we should be playing, be playing limiting to two hour parking in that cul-de-sac, because obviously, that's part of the problem um with some of those adjoining property owners. So that's that's my land, but as well.
Thank you. Thanks. So a few things. Um, and by Joe, by the way, I would encourage you uh to uh to bring this up because we um we did have the public hearing for Settlers Lane, and we could have we, at that time, we may have been able to add the parking, but we're we're happy to to accommodate that. I think it's a that's um something that could be done. Um, you could also work with uh with Ken Gray on on that. Um, if that's something that you're inclined to do, and you'll have our support. Um, but to just to clarify, are you um just are you uh in favor of this, or is there a change that you'd like us to make?
I I I I'm not in favor of the uh, perhaps it's not, I I am in favor of the raising the fees for the uh for the usage. So I I want to publicly object to the to the files, but I will I will agree to raising the fees.
But do you you want us to include non-residents in the fees to make?
Um, that's up to the board. I'm it's it's just, it's it's a yeah.
Well, I wouldn't be in favor. This is for village residents. This isn't for outside people. This is it's in there already. It's a it's a village court for village residents. Why would you? Why would you? There's a control problem there. Why would you want outside residents, non-residents there?
I don't.
That doesn't even make sense.
Who knows? But who knows his residence is not a resident? You know, we can't we can't.
Well, we will know because they they will have a permit, Joe. When they come in, they'll apply for a permit, they'll pay for their permit like they always do. And they will get a fob, so they will, as a permit, a person with the permit can enter the tennis court.
Right. So all I'm saying is we should, if we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna someone to get that get their license in. I mean, I mean, there's no, there's very little to to, you know, and already get a uh a getting a a B pass, you have to bring in your your driver's license or your uh bill for your house. So I I don't see that happening with the uh with the court. So all I'm saying is, let's put in a fee. If people from outside the village want to use it, they can use it for a higher fee. Because clearly, it's all those residents using it now. So.
I I would refer, I would defer to Attorney Gray, but I believe that that would require a public hearing, because I think the code states um that it's for village resident use only, correct?
Why don't we just table this and and we could circle back with trust me, trust me, Glock, then?
Why don't we take a vote?
Okay, I'm fine. I know if trust me, Glock wants to have the non-village residents use the.
Well, then he let's have a vote. He, I don't think I I I think we should only have this for residents. Why would you have non-residents? And why do you have to? You have to have a key or else you can't have the code enforcement officer going onto the court and saying, can I see your permit or not? I mean, the the key ensures that the people who are in there are people who've who paid the fee. I mean, that's what the that's what the key fob does.
So every time.
Trust me, can I finish, please, without interruption? I don't understand why you would want to have non-residents, even if they, no matter what their fee paid. I don't understand what your disagreement with the system is. The fees will pay for the key fob. It'll be revenue neutral. Who are you trying to make happier than?
I'm trying to address concerns of the residents that emailed us the other day, but obviously, the board is is dismissing that right now. So so all I'm saying is, you know, we can't control the use of the court.
We can't control it with the key fob system. That's how we're gonna control that. What this resolution is about.
So when you're when you're gonna keep up, you have to bring your license in or or bill? Is that is that what we're doing here? How how are you going to?
Somebody doesn't, somebody doesn't go to the board, doesn't get the license, just shows up and starts playing tennis. How do you get that person off the court? How do you know if they have a license or not? Come on, Joe.
I.
The key fob ensures that they've been and that they've paid the fee. That's what the key fob does. Unless you want to hire a person to sit at the gate and say, show me your pass to get in here, which we do at the beach, by the way. That's why you can do that at the beach. But we can't have a person sitting at the tennis court saying, show me your pass. Anyway, there's a motion, Mr. Mayor, and I believe the motion was seconded, and I think we should vote on the motion.
All right. Thank you. It's important. We got it. We have to stay focused, you know, on on the big picture items here, you know, lowering freezing taxes, making sure our balance sheet looks good, our environmental projects, our downtown revitalization. Um, I think I think this is a good, I think it accomplishes what some of the neighbors are asking for, and we could always add on to this later. Um, and we'll happily serve the neighbors in any community for whatever they're looking for. So uh, with that being said, uh, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number ten, whereas the at the February twenty twenty two meeting, the Board of Trustees approved Love Michael and U S Autism Homes to hold the Doggy Dash for Autism on Saturday, April second uh from ten thirty A M. To two thirty P M. With a start and finish in Agawam Park. Resolve that the the resolution is hereby amended to read, the Board of Trustees approves the Love Michael and U S Autism Homes to hold a Doggy Dash for Autism on on Saturday, April ninth from ten thirty A M. To two thirty P M. Um, this was just requested by them. They needed a date change. So um, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number eleven, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the Rogers Memorial Library to hold the annual outdoor movie at Agawam Park on Tuesday, August twenty third, twenty twenty two, at eight P M. To ten P M. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve, the Board of Trustees, the Incorporated Village of Southampton, authorizes the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Saturday, March twenty six, twenty twenty two, at ten A M. To be held at the Southampton Cultural Center regarding the public forum for the Southampton Village Comprehensive Plan Update. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number thirteen, the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Climate Action Committee and the Southampton History Museum to host a Bike Southampton event on Sunday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, from one P M. To four P M. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Host. Resolution number fourteen.
Charlene, did you want to add in there the alternate rain date?
Oh, that's a great idea. Um, all right. So uh, so.
June fifth, if I remember.
Okay, so uh, we will amend the resolution to include, we have a motion to amend the resolution to include um a rain date of Sunday, June fifth.
Motion, you amend.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, so resolution number fourteen, uh, Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Chamber of Commerce events for twenty twenty two as follows. Sundays from May first to October ninth, the Farmers and Artisans Market to be held in Agawam Park from nine to three P M. Saturday, July second, Sunday, July third, Art and Antique Festival, Antique Cars and Fire Truck Display, time yet to be confirmed. Monday, October third, Paint the Town Pink and Kickoff Breast Cancer Awareness Month Tree Lighting Ceremony to be held in the front entrance of Southampton Chamber Office at six thirty P M. Saturday, November twenty sixth, the Twenty Sixth Annual Fire Truck Parade of Lights held in the village commencing at sundown four forty five P M. This event is in conjunction with the Village Decorating Committee and will be followed by the tree lighting in Agawam Park at five fifteen. Saturday, December third, Southampton, it's a wonderful village consisting of all day events. Time in is yet to be confirmed. Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second that with the discussion.
Yes.
Showing showing the farmers market.
Yeah.
Didn't that, doesn't that usually go to the end of November, just before Thanksgiving? Then we extend it.
It generally does.
Put in.
It generally does, but this is what the chamber submitted.
I didn't hear you, Charlene. I'm sorry.
I said, I, sorry, it's fine, trustee. Um, uh, it generally does, except this was verbatim what they had submitted from the chamber.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, um, so all in favor?
I.
I.
opposed. Resolve, uh, resolution number fifteen, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the following twenty twenty two beach parking permit fee uh as follows, resident permits, no cost, three permits per property, one permit per business owner or manager. Additional permits may be purchased at the summer visitor rate of five hundred dollars each. Local non-resident, uh, non-village resident permit, two hundred and fifty dollars each. Senior vet or veteran, local non-village resident permit, one seventy five, one per property. A summer visitor permit is five hundred dollars. Note hotels, motels, and B and Bs must purchase a minimum of ten. Um, and that is it. Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Discussion, discussion.
Yeah.
Are are these the same? Are these the same as last year, Charlene? Is there any increase? These are the same.
These are the same as last year, trustee. The only, we did increase the uh the visitor permits last year from four fifty to five hundred.
And is there a numerical limit, or it's we just keep selling them as long as somebody wants one?
Yes.
Got it.
Should it could make sense, if you want to proceed with this, this is fine. Um, we could always um, we could always amend that later, i- if need be, if we wanted to go make any changes to this.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so all, do we have a sec? We had a second, correct?
Not a second.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number sixteen, resolve the village administrators hereby authorized to publish a notice of public hearing for the twenty twenty two, twenty three tentative budget scheduled for April twelfth, twenty twenty two, at six P M. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number seventeen, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village authorizes the village administrator to notice a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, April twelfth, at six P M. As a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting for the purpose of considering authorizing the village to adopt uh fiscal, uh, adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June first, which may have a real property tax levy of more than the tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A second? Um, just as as a further clarification, um, this is a recommended practice. Our budget does not include um a tax rate or tax levy that would um would uh pierce the tax cap, and generally, we um either table this or or close, open and close it without any action taken. Uh, so all in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? All right, resolution number eighteen, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the agreement with Civic Plus for the implementation of the Civic Rec Module and Forte. These systems will be used by Civic Plus Pay Configuration to accept and uh payments and streamline the cashless program at Cooper's Beach and integrate an option for e-purchasing of summer visitor passes at a cost of twenty three thousand seven hundred and fifty eight dollars for the initial year. Recurring year thereafter cost will be eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety one dollars paid for by trustee special projects, A ten ten four three three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? A resolution number nineteen, the Board of Trustees uh authorize the village administrator to publish a note, a notice of public hearing for Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, at five P M. Is a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding the local law five dash twenty twenty two. The proposal to amend the Village Code, Chapter seventy three, landscapers and amend the Village Code, Chapter seventy eight, nuisances, more specifically to modify licensing of landscapers and to modify the permitted use of gas leaf blowers in the village. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Arts Artist Association Art Fair in Agawam Park on September sixteenth and seventeenth, from ten A M. To six P M. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty one, the twenty twenty one LoSAP retirement points listing for all volunteer fire department workers of the Village of Southampton Fire Department has met at the required posting requirements and has been certified by the Village Fire Department Chief and Manager and is hereby approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty two, resolve the Board of Trustees, the Incorporated Village of Southampton, authorize the village administrator to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two uh at five P M. As a hybrid in-person Zoom meeting regarding local laws dash six, six dash twenty twenty two, the proposal to amend Village Code to add a rental registry law, more specifically to implement a registry and permit process for village rental properties within the Southampton Village Building Department Land Use Department. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty three, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the beach event application for Crider Beach on Friday, July twenty second, twenty twenty two at six P M. To nine P M. Nine thirty P M. For one hundred guest parking will be pre-coordinated, and exception parking letters will be conspicuously displayed on vehicles during the event. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Discussion.
Trustee?
I remember last year, we had some issues with um some uh beach fires that we didn't have some garbage and um and, you know, uh, other party theories. Do are we gonna make sure that this year, we're gonna have a more more regulate, make sure we have a code enforcement go down there, maybe in the morning, make sure things cleaned up and the um, the um, ambers are buried and because it, because there was several issues last year with garbage. Again, garbage and other party uh weighed material that was left behind by partygoers. So I just want to make sure going into this uh spring and summer, that we are more vigilant and making sure we have a uh have a clean beach the next day, because it wasn't always the case last year.
Yes, trustee, and 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 Acting Chief Hurtow in her um, in her budget submission had requested additional TCOs and code enforcement um, seasonals um, for that purpose, for making sure that they're.
Right. Great. Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty four, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the beach event application for Crider Beach on Saturday, July twenty third, twenty twenty two from six to eight PM for two hundred guests. Parking will be pre-coordinated and exception to parking letters will be conspicuous, conspicuously displayed on vehicles during the event. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? A resolution number twenty five, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the beach event application for Gin Beach Lane on Friday, August twelfth from six to twelve PM for one hundred and ninety nine guests. Parking will be pre-coordinated and exception to parking letters will be conspicuously displayed on vehicles during the event. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty six, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton authorizes the village administrator to publish the notice of public hearing to be held Tuesday, March twenty ninth at five PM as a hybrid slash in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law seven dash twenty twenty two to the proposal to amend Village Code, Chapter one sixteen zoning specifically Section one sixteen dash thirty eight entitled Site Plan Review. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. That concludes the resolution portion.
Thank you very much, Charlene. There are no appointments this evening other than the ones that we have already resolved. So we'll move forward to comments from board members. First is trustee Arresta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, congratulations to all those that part of the building department. I'm always happy when DPW is up there for employee or employees of the month and people don't realize what they do behind the scenes when it comes to snowstorms. But more than that, the DPW really works as a team, all the different departments, which is very important. Also, the, some of the other things that the building maintenance department has been working on is that, once again, they began to set up programmable thermostats with the, they just finished Village Hall and they're working in other buildings because of the protect, predicted energy costs rising, as we see it rising every day. So they're working on that to save energy and they've also just finished installing sixty LED lights that from Elm Street West and all the way over to Moses, I believe. And so they're just about finished with that. So I know the Climate Action Committee is always happy to hear news like that, that going to LEDs. The other thing I'd like to actually announce is that a junior at Southampton High School, Andrew Salata, has stepped up and he is going to be spearheading a fundraiser to rebuild the World War One monument. He will be doing that in conjunction with the Southampton High School Patriotic Club. So they just let me know about this. We've been speaking back and forth a bit. So they're, right now they're going to organize a fundraiser and tie it into March Madness at the school to get this going. A little bit about Andrew, he loves history, especially World War One. And he was looking for a way to help his community. And this is, he knows how incredibly important this is to, to get that, that World War One monument looking the way that it should. And he knows, even as a junior in high school, how much meaning that has to the village, to all that have served. So he's, he's truly dedicating himself to one of the two services of this country, and I think this is a great start. He, actually, he came to me with this. It was terrific and he's demonstrating true leadership and taking this on. It's a big undertaking. So with that, with that being said, at this point, we're, we just hit over seventy three thousand dollars. We moved the, the hourglass closer to Job's Lane so people could see. When President commented that we should move it so people were aware that there is a fundraiser going on. Once again, I want to thank everyone that's been very, very generous so far. But we need, our goal at this time is to get this project started is two hundred thousand dollars. So if, if you have it and you're thinking about it, it would be great if you can do it or, you know, participate with the Patriot, the Patriot Club from the, the high school. So I know that it's always great to see young people get involved, especially, I love seeing young people so involved with history and love of this country. And, and by the way, he's also applying to West Point. So he's got a lot on his plate, Andrew, but he's up to the task. I do also, once again, I know I said it before, but I want to give, once again, a big thanks to Charlene for this big undertaking and coordinating everyone that was involved with the, this, the budget, which I think it's something for us to be very proud of as a board. So have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Arresta. Next is trustee Brown.
She would like to salute and thank the building department. I thought that was a great idea. It is a team effort, so you all to be saluted and we thank you for all your hard work. It is not unseen, but it is appreciated and thank you so very much. And I'd like to just take this time to wish all the women, this is Women's History Month. So I'd like to start by thanking, I'm not going to call out names, but thanking all the women of Southampton from Village Hall to our ambulance, to our fire department, our police officers, our retailers, our entrepreneurs. We just want to thank you all and salute you and it is definitely a village coming together. So we just want to celebrate together and acknowledge Women's History Month.
Thank you very much, trustee Brown, trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say again, congratulations to Bob and his team for all the hard work over the last few months and that is well deserved because his team does a lot, does a lot of work for all the those properties and those buildings. I also just want to say, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone back in person, the public. And we have our public, our public here is coming up and I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to hearing the public input because that's why we're here, we're here to serve the public and the residents. I'm looking forward to hearing their thoughts on everything from the budget to the rental laws. So we're looking forward to hearing all this one and, and of course, the master plan update. So looking forward to all that and see you all then.
Thank you very much, trustee McLaughlin, trustee Stevenson.
Here, likewise, I would like to thank the building maintenance department for the great job they do. Definitely. You don't see these guys very much, but you see the result of their hard work and, and and thanks to Bob Hand, true leadership to spread the, the accolades to his entire team. Great job, Bob. A project near and dear to my heart, the Comprehensive Master Plan has been proceeding apace under the great leadership of Bill Manger and his committee. He's been working with Frank Fish and the guys at BFJ. And they've really done a tremendous job in terms of formulating a draft of the Comprehensive Master Plan, which really is the vision for what we want the Village of Southampton to look like going forward. The green spaces, the environmental concerns, the commercial district. All things built into this plan are, are a result of community input. And the next great opportunity for this community input is on March twenty sixth at ten AM at the Cultural Center. There will be a public hearing on the master plan. We're getting towards the end of the project. So please come, make your opinions heard, listen to what the plan includes. Make sure that what you see as the future of Southampton is represented in what the makers of the plan, Bill Manger and his group are working on. But thanks to them for the great job they have done so far. And I also would like to just reinforce the comments that have been made to give great praise to Charlene Cagle Betts and Julie Kudop and Miranda for the work they've done on the budget. To Deputy Mayor Arresta, Len Zanotti, Rose Dios at Money Penny, Dave Neller, Jim McNodden of the Budget and Finance Committee. It's really been a super amount of work and I've just seen a little bit of it. Everybody has to meet with the department heads and liaisons and go over, hey, what happened last year? What do you expect is going to happen this year? And of course, it's gazing at a crystal ball and nobody really knows exactly what's going to happen next year, but you have to make your best guess and that gives you the roadmap for where you can plan on, as things occur next year. And if things don't go quite the same way, if there's too much inflation, if there's other things that happen, the stock market doesn't do as well as we thought it might. You of course make mid course corrections, but that's the whole point of the budget. So you know where you are, where you want to get to and the changes you want to make. So again, great job at all those people at all the department heads putting this budget together. I really think, take a look at it when it's posted on the village website. Get your questions together so that we have the public hearing on it in two weeks. You'll be able to talk about it and make your feelings heard. That's all I've got. Thanks, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. I'll conclude with, with some remarks tonight. And first, I'll echo our board's thoughts on, on Bob Hand and his team, building maintenance. And then also wanted to thank our Parks Department. We're going to have a lot to ask of them as we approach spring. There's a big, big lift to do and we also really appreciate their work and we're looking forward to seeing them put their best foot forward as we get into the, the spring season. While we're on the topic of parks, I wanted to kind of let our board know and our public know about something that is, that is going on. So many, many, some residents may have, may have seen this, this sketch here and this is Moses Park. And we listened to our residents as to what they wanted to see in Moses Park. And we delivered on that after years of this park not getting opened, we got the park opened. Trustee Arresta, who is the liaison to the Public Works Department and Parks Department, really helped work with Steve Phillips and and team to get this rolling. And I know a lot of residents have, have brought back very positive feedback about this park. However, the village, we've, the village, we have learned has a commitment to the town and the town CPF Fund. And obviously this board, none of us was here when, when this sketch was created. But, you know, the two prior boards made a commitment to the town to follow a very specific plan. And we have to follow through on, on that plan. This may not be entirely what the public wants, but there's no other way to say it. I can't sugarcoat this. Promises were made and now it's up to us to deliver on those promises. We may be able to make some amendments. So as we talk about the budget, our board is going to have to put together some funds to, to create this, this park. And again, we wanted to let our residents know very clearly that we got this park open. Our residents enjoy it. Yes, there's always good room for improvement. We can make some amendments, but the village does have a commitment to the town to make further changes and move further on, on this park plan, which again, we can post this to the village website so people, people can see it. But I just wanted to put the public on, on notice here so they know exactly what is going on and why it is going on. And we'll have to rely on this board and our treasury team to find the money to fulfill the promises that were made years ago. Now, I'll keep on moving here. Wanted to echo Roy, very excited about the meeting for our Comprehensive Master Plan. We're more than halfway done now. This is a, a large amount of work to be done, hasn't been done in over twenty years. And we're very proud to deliver a Comprehensive Master Plan, but we'll need the support and help of the public because this is a document that's going to help guide, guide our village for the next years or decade to come. Very excited to see the, the grant for the constructed wetlands where we've partnered with. We've been working on that for some time and it's great to have this finally go through. So we'll be spending that, that grant money that we've earned from the town WQIP CPF Fund. We're very excited about that. Wanted to also, once again, say very excited about the Love Michael event. Super exciting. It's a great group of, of young people and looking forward to seeing them out again. And on a few other notes, the deputy mayor helped get this process going for electric charging stations and would love to make sure, would love to have Gary come and, and give us an update on where he stands on that. It's been some time now. I don't think we should stop where we are. I think we should keep on, on moving on that. And while more and more of our village residents are purchasing electric and hybrid vehicles, I think it's more important that we continue to add them. So we're looking forward to this installation, but would love to invite Gary to give us an update on, on his work over the last two years on this. And the last thing I wanted to say on a totally different note is while we move forward on our resolutions and our plans for our parks and other things that are, seem important to us, but they are relatively small on the global scale. Almost all of us have kind of, have watched what is going on in Ukraine right now. And the atrocities and lack of care for human life are truly heartbreaking to everyone. And I just wanted to just say a few words on, on, on that. And it is my hope that something positive might happen there. Though not likely, I would encourage everybody to contribute in any way possible. There are many ways where a village residents can donate to help provide humanitarian aid, whether that's to larger organizations like the Red Cross, UNICEF, or smaller organizations that might have even a more direct impact because of their smaller size. But there's plenty of organizations where people can donate in any type of capacity. And I, I hope that the, the leaders of our country, as well as those across the globe can help put this to an end because it is truly heartbreaking and I've been following the situation quite closely. And no one wants to see anything like this happen. So I just wanted to share a few words on, on that. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to, to adjourn. But before I do that, I just wanted to thank again our treasury team, Charlene and Julie and the Budget and Finance Committee for their hard work on the budget. We're looking forward to the public hearing. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.